So, just to get us caught up, we're at special permit application number 173A next to Selene E. 47, Boston Post Road. We're not going to read the whole thing.
This is the space now occupied by Coco's Cafe next to Post Corner Pizza on Boston Post Road. The applicant has proposed, as you can see in the application materials, a hair cutting salon. There is one correction in the application materials. There will be four chairs, two adults, and two children's chairs. I think there was a typo which noted five. There will also be two hair washing stations in the space. Upstairs above this space in the same building are four one-bedroom apartments, and the parking lot behind also serves the House of Needlepoint, which I believe is the final commercial tenant in this building. So, three commercial tenants on the first floor, House of Needlepoint, Coco's Cafe, Post Corner Pizza, some upstairs apartments. They all share the parking in the back, the dumpsters in the back. There is municipal parking across the street in the Mechanic Street Parking Lot. On the other side of Mansfield Avenue, there's the Tilly Parking Lot. And the hours of operation are noted in the application materials, and the applicant has submitted a number of photographs over a number of days showing the parking lots, the front of the building, the back of the building, and has tried to document as best as possible what the parking's like. The commission, having lived in town, is all familiar with this property.
And the street parking, too.
There's on-street parking closer to Starbucks, and in the next block closer to downtown in front of Neo-Hawks Building.
And lastly, we're looking at this because of service business and the central business issue?
It's a special permit use, personal service use, in the CBD zone.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you have much to add to Jeremy's presentation.
I guess maybe he explained.
Summarize it pretty well. I'm sorry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Najata Slone.
Do you have the... You're good?
I think so, yes.
I represent proposal to establish a hair salon, which the main activity of our business is going to be hair cutting salon for men and childrens. There will be two adult hair cutting chairs plus two children's chairs plus two hair washing chairs. The attached floor plan will show the location of the five hair... four hair cutting chairs and two washing stations, reception area and the waiting area. So, the trash will be removed through the rear door to the rear parking lot where the building trash container is located. I'm going to use a service company, cleaning service company, for lean towels to get washed. Because of the nature of the business, as a hair salon, there's not going to be any noise. We're not going to use any chemicals there, so in case we need fresh air, we... I'm planning to use air purifier.
And just remind us, how many hair cutters at once? How many salon stylists or...
Two.
Two? At once, so...
At once. It's going to be me and my brother.
Okay.
It's going to be family business, and my wife, she's going to be a receptionist.
Okay.
So, usually normally, we're going to come by, like, with one car.
Appointment only or walk-ins as well?
Walk-ins as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions, sir?
Jeremy, where was the typo in the...
It was in the number of seats. I think it one... There's one document that says five.
Okay. In this hair salon narrative, it says two-two.
Yes, in here.
I think there was one document that had it correct, and then there was one which we went through earlier, which we said, oh, boy, that's not correct. We want to make sure the correct number is in the record.
Got it.
Unless you have anything else to say, I'd like to see if anybody in the audience has any questions.
Well, if you guys want to hear about traffic reports.
I don't think we need to. I think we're really familiar with the area and the amount of parking in the area, so I think...
Yeah, no parking.
And you also produced that in your filing as well.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. And again, with two people actually cutting hair, it's not going to be like fifty people trying to park it at the same time. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this? All right. So, I'd love to entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. We'll probably deliberate this later. You don't have to stick around, Jeremy will fill you in.
All right.
If you'd like to, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Item number two, flood damage prevention application number 391, Vogel Property Services LLC, 679-655, Boston Post Road, proposal to regrade the front and side yards of the property to create low point and to install stormwater management features and informs related site development activities within a regulated area. The .43 acre subject property is situated in the northwest side of Boston Post Road, approximately 100 feet northeast of its intersection with Academy Street, and is shown on a sister's map, number 16, as lot number 63-1 in the DB1 and R1/3rd Zone.
The subject property is two commercial buildings on one lot. You're familiar with the property because the property adjacent came to the commission a few months ago. In this case, the property is entirely in the flood zone, and some wetlands are in the rear of the property. The applicant's here tonight to try to address an ongoing drainage problem in the front right corner of the property, and what they'll be doing is installing some drainage and at the same time installing a new generator and HVAC air conditioning unit on a platform to meet the flood regulations. The EPC did grant approval on February 7th. I believe you have a copy of that in your packets, which was an agent approval, very straightforward. There's no... The only new impervious surface as part of this application are the platforms for the generator and HVAC units.
This is right next to the property where the two apartment bungalows in the back and then the garage.
Correct. This is further to the east of that property.
Has this property on the top.
Harry Rochefell of McCord Engineering is here to add details.
Good evening, commission. My name is Harry Rochefell with McCord Engineering, representing George Vogel of Vogel Property Services.
Can you spell your name for me, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As Jeremy stated, this already went through EPC approval. See the wetlands. They're in the back there in the dark area.
Very well played.
So, the idea here is there is no new impervious surface being created. It's strictly a project to mitigate existing drainage concerns. Where the grade is proposed in the front right portion of the yard there, there is a low point, so there's not much we could do with grading anyway. And the other problem with that, as Jeremy said, is the whole property is in the flood plain, so any grading we brought in...
You have to give that one back, though, show.
This one works. You have to give that one back.
So, as I was saying, the low point is pretty much in the front yard here. Every time it would rain, it would just pond, and it became a problem for him recently. This property here all drains here, everything from the lip of the pavement comes this way and same thing from the road after the curb. So, it was just becoming a problem. Also, his sump pump outlet, forced main outlets, right there as well to daylight. So, the idea here is we're going to put a yard drain at that low point. We're going to tie that into a pump pit that will also receive the discharge from the sump pump in the basement, and then we're just going to pump that back out to the wetlands where it was intended to go, where the whole property all comes down this way anyway. There is an existing 12-inch pipe here, so it was... This whole property was intended to go there anyway. Believe it continues right down onto Goodwides River. Like I said, no fill being brought in strictly to just mitigate existing drainage issues.
And that's the best way, instead of filling it? I was just wondering.
Just because if we brought any material into the flood plain, we would have to take it out somewhere else, and then we'd just create another problem.
All right.
So, we figured this would be the, you know, the simplest way and probably the most efficient way to handle it.
Great. Any questions up here? Seeing none.
And we're seeing this only because it's in a flood zone.
Only... Right. The level of regrading has risen to the level of requiring a regrading permit. It's solely because the work is in the flood zone.
Okay.
Great. Anybody out there have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Can you get no other questions up here?
No.
So, can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion to close. Jim, you're up.
First.
Kevin, second.
Kevin, second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Switching now to the general...
Thank you very much.
Mandatory referral number 1-2019, Park and Recreation Department, Diller Property, Nutmeg Lane, request for a report under CGS 8-24 for substantial improvement to town property, including a walking cross-country path and a parallel parking along Nutmeg Lane.
You have in your packets February 20th memo from Pam Gary, Director of Parks Recreation. I have extra copies if you need it. But basically, the state statute requires that any substantial improvements to town property require a report from the commission with regard to consistency with the 2016 Town Plan of Conservation Development. Pam has included a few pages from the town plan and highlighted those, which she believes, note, the proposal is consistent, in her opinion. As Pam mentioned, basically, all they're installing there is a cross-country path, two-foot-wide plank boardwalk, and creating a few parking spaces. The commission will see the full application probably in April 9th, it looks like.
This is as part of the larger high school...
Cross-country path, which you'll see that's in there. So, I guess...
Explain why we're not looking at it on the Darien High School as a mandatory referral.
Well, because based on what they're... The amount of work they're doing at the high school to us as staff did not seem to be a significant improvement to a property which already has a huge high school, a track, seven tennis courts, five ball fields, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It's basically, a lot of it's just running over grass and existing turf, artificial turf field, so...
There will be some minor improvements, but again, minor is the key word there.
This is different.
The Diller property has nothing on it, so some might argue that any improvement is more substantial.
Significant enough.
So, certainly, whatever feedback you give us tonight, Fred and I can draft a report and have it ready for your next meeting.
And where exactly is the Diller property?
Diller property is, as you're looking at the high school, I'll call it the bottom left. As you drive up Noroten, go up Noroten, and you start going around the circle.
Yeah.
The intersection of Noroten and the oval, to the left of that is the five acres.
Basically bordered by that point and Nutmeg Lane.
If you're going down Nutmeg Lane...
It's going to be on the right hand side.
So, it's that big plot?
Yes.
When you drive down Nutmeg, the woods, you're packed. That's the Diller property.
I wondered why there wasn't anything there.
And so, it's five acres of town-owned property.
And is it dedicated parkland?
I believe it is.
Okay. So...
So, there's a lot of wetlands on it, and there's been numerous informal discussions in the past with what to do with it. As the high school was being built, there were discussions, but at this point, nothing's been built on it since the town has obtained it.
So, essentially, we're going to see an entire plan with a site plan amendment for Darien High School, even though it's, again, a lot of it's just running on grass, existing kind of open land. They're not cutting through the woods or anything on the high school property, so...
Right. And you'll hear more about the Diller aspect as a separate but related application. For this Diller improvements, they've designed this path so that no trees will be cut.
Oh, wow. Great.
They're going to... Because... And we'll hear more from the...
No substantial trees? Or, I mean, there're probably little saplings and stuff.
Maybe a sampling, but basically, they've tried to go around the big trees, and you'll hear more about what... How often a cross-country path is used and things like that.
Scheduling, you know, intensity use, that sort of thing.
So, that's coming, but at least the report needs to be issued because this has to go to the RTM, because it's going to be a gift from the Athletic Foundation, and gifts over a certain value have to go to the RTM for people.
Yeah, so it also goes to EPC, right? They're going to be before we see it.
It's going to EPC. It's going, right, and they've... They have a hearing scheduled March 6th, which is next Wednesday.
So, they're going to get started, maybe even finished, before we get started, and then we'll go through the review process and then hand it off to the Board of Selectmen, who's got to okay the gift, RTM, and then finally, Board of Ed's got to accept the gift.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So, I make a motion... I would ask for a motion for them to draft a letter or a referral, and then we'll review it at the next meeting.
Motion to draft a referral.
Okay.
Okay. We'll draft something for the next meeting for vote.
Great.
Number four, special permit application number 66I, Darien YMCA 2420, Boston Post Road, special event scheduled for 2019.
You have a memo from Jennifer Gardner, the new executive director of the Darien YMCA, who took over for Pat Morrissey a few months ago. I've looked at what she put together. It's very, very consistent with what Pat has done for the past few years in terms of the nature and size and timing of the events, swimming, gymnastics, family fun day, Halloween party, nursery school graduation.
This is the model we've used for now a couple others, right? Now, like Ox Ridge, Highland Farm now.
Right, there are a few properties that have to report to the commission. The YMCA has been going on for many years now. So, I would recommend approval. This is very consistent. Nothing really new at this point.
And we have to approve it based on the resolution or...
Based on the revolution... Resolution. I know we talked in the past about staff just taking care of it. I think in this case, new executive director gave you an opportunity.
Can I get a motion to approve the schedule?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Great.
Thank you.
We have a typo. Not our typo, if you want to see it. Not our typo, but my is a typo.
Number five, Boxcar app for train station parking, discussion regarding the potential for Boxcar in locations near the Darien and Rock Heights train stations. The presentation with the application developers will be made.
So, Jeremy's had a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, a decent amount of interaction with these individuals, so you want to just set us up while we're doing right now?
You'll hear more. Boxcar is an app that folks can use to find train station parking on short notice, if you will, or one time. These gentlemen will introduce themselves. They met with Jamie Stevenson, who suggested they talk to me and to the commission. I sat down with Joe and Spencer a couple weeks ago, a month ago, and said, this is kind of a unique thing. Need to talk to the commission about possible zoning issues, possibly a trial. Once you understand how it works, what they're here to hear from you tonight is feedback, thoughts, whether you'd be open to something like this in Darien near the train stations. It's kind of a new thing. You'll hear more about how it's been tried in other communities, most recently in New Canaan, near the New Canaan train station. So, you get a feel for what it's all about, and then what they're looking for at the end of the presentation is feedback from you on how minimal you are...
How to proceed, if we want.
And then possible next steps.
That was kind of the process Jeremy and I discussed is, you know, how do we give this a trial run before we start to change our regs and that sort of thing?
I'm sorry, so the Boxcars are in New Canaan?
Boxcar is in New Canaan.
Amongst a number of other communities.
Yep. New Canaan is the closest town to Darien.
Oh, cool. I just downloaded the app. I just...
Oh, cool.
And so, and these gentlemen will explain it. If you, on short notice, say, jeez, I really need to get to the city tomorrow, I don't want to go through the whole rigmarole of figuring out, you just go to the app. It tells you where you've been reserved for, how much you're going to pay for the spot, and that is your spot for.
All your questions will be answered.
Yeah, yeah.
It is a new concept.
Just introduce yourself for Bonnie.
So, my name is Joe Colangelo. That is spelled C-O-L-A-N-G-E-L-O.
Thank you.
I'm the founder... You're welcome. I'm the founder and CEO of Boxcar. Boxcar, we focus on helping people from the suburbs commute better, and the main way that we do that is through our parking product, which I'm going to tell you about tonight. And so, we are, for lack of a simpler explanation, like Airbnb for parking. And so, we partner with properties near suburban train centers where it's really difficult to park. These are people that have extra parking. So, our biggest sump supply of parking spots is churches. You can picture this works really well for them because they need their parking lots on Saturday and Sunday. They don't need them Monday through Friday, and they really appreciate the extra income that's generated from renting them out. So, I want to walk through a little bit about our company today. All right. So, current Darien commuter parking situation, don't really need to highlight that for you. Large commuter waitlist, large commuter population, and all the problems that come with, you know, drop off and pickup, you know, come along. Our presence in Darien as well as the other 25 towns are present. So, next slide. Just wanted to run through Chatham, New Jersey, real fast. This is one of the first towns that we started in, and I think it's kind of similar to Darien as you can see, population 19,500, median family income 156,000, about an hour train to New York, four-year waitlist, and Darien was voted Connecticut's best town to live in. Chatham was the best, fourth-best commuter town in New Jersey. So, this is what Chatham's downtown commuter parking looks like. You can see they've got, I think, 412 permit and metered spots. So, that's about 350 spots for residents who are permit holders, who have gotten off that waitlist, and then about 50 daily spots that usually fill up around 7:00 AM. At the same time, they have 1,100 private parking spots. Now, not all of these parking spots are empty. In fact, most of them aren't, right? They're used by shoppers or downtown employees, and for whatever reason, they may not be good candidates. But we don't need a lot of spots to make a pretty big difference. So, if you go to the next one, these are our actual parking spots in Chatham. We're up to about 50 now. You can see that the blue is very small compared to the yellow. So, with 1,100 parking spots, we were able to find 50 that actually, you know, that the owners agreed to partner with Boxcar and rent out their parking spots to commuters during the day.
What about the... Maybe you're going to hit this, but the zoning process there?
So, that's why I'm here, is that, you know, we don't want to beg forgiveness.
Yeah.
We want to ask permission. We think this is a good idea, and that... Or, we think this is a good solution to this problem, but if it's against zoning, if it's just culturally not a good fit, or if, whatever reason, you don't think we should do this in Darien, we want to talk to you first before we start partnering with people.
Yeah.
And I'll be frank, like, towns tell us who not to partner with. They say, don't work there. Please don't rent out people's driveways in our town, and, you know, we are here at your behest, so in most towns, this is a gray area for zoning. So, 50 spots, we've had 7,500 reservations, and 6.8 parkers per spot. So, what that actually means is that we've had over 250 people use these 50 spots in the last year. So, unlike a permit spot where maybe 1, 1.2 people get to use it on average per year, we're able to, by selling daily spots, you know, people download our app, they'll reserve just a particular day, we're able to get a lot of usage by residents rather than, you know, kind of the restricted way.
You bring up the utilization rate basically.
Increase, yeah.
By reserving.
Exactly. So, Darien, you really distinguish between... This is just all of your municipal parking, so some of it is permit, some of it is daily, but it's all basically owned by the municipality. So, we go to the next one. You similarly have about 1,100 private parking spots. We have already ruled out a lot of these, these red ones, as just not really great candidates because they're small lots. You can tell that their parking's already used by their customers or their employees or both, and, you know, it's just in such a high-traffic area. But these yellow spots, there's 1,100 parking spots that are available. Again, they're not all available available.
All right. So, the yellow spots represent the 1,100... I'm sorry, the yellow shading represents the 1,100.
Exactly. These would be the spots that... Am I right, Spencer?
Right. Those would be our top leads, you know, if we received...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We have to buy the microphone so we can all...
Can you just reiterate what Spencer just said?
Spencer said, those would be our top leads.
Thank you.
So, I have a question, just because I downloaded your app. So, the Tommich Hill Tier Four, even though that's municipal, you're... If they haven't been reserved, like, if no... If there's not a waitlist for those spots, you... Then you would say to us, hey, planning and zoning, or how would that work? Do we have... We don't even have it. Do we have any spots everywhere?
So, the... So, we have 60 parking spots in St. Aloysius in downtown New Canaan. These are our traditional... This is the traditional model that we operate with in 25 towns. New Canaan has taken an additional step to say, we would like you to manage 40 municipal daily spots.
Oh, wow.
And so, we are the exclusive manager for those spots. This gives them visibility into who's using those spots, so we're able to give them weekly or obviously real-time reports on, you know, what town they reside in, how frequently they're parking. We're allowed to...
You're selling our information.
Right. Exactly.
So, wait, do you... Actually, that's a great question. Do you sell the information to New Canaan?
No, absolutely not, so...
So, you're giving it... You're... So, basically, you're giving residents, and you get that from the data you collect from someone paying with their credit card?
Exactly. And so, in New Canaan's case, we also do something called... So, we created this thing called user groups. And so, New Canaan residents, now, our parking does not sell out there, but it sells out in most towns, and it probably will start selling out in New Canaan shortly. Now that we've been up for three months, the numbers are kind of getting close. New Canaan residents can book further in advance than non-residents. And so, this is something that we put New Canaan residents into a distinct New Canaan residents user group, and that user group has an attribute where they can book 28 days in advance and reserve the days they want, because it's all reserved in advance parking, whereas non-residents, if you download the app right now, you can see that you can down... You can reserve 14 days in advance.
Oh, okay. It looks like four right now to me.
And what percentage of those 40 spots, what percentage of the non-permitted spots at Tommich Hill is that... So, there's, you know, there's a... The upper spot is permitted.
There are 98 total, so...
So, you roughly have half of the...
Forty and a half percent, yes.
So, this is, by the way, this... We're not going to be discussing municipal parking in this discussion, just so you know, but...
Because we don't have it, right? We don't have...
Well, they could manage it for us, but that's not our purview, right? That's going to be parking authority. Yeah. Board of Selectmen. So, but they're great questions, because I think it's interesting that New Canaan took that additional step right away. I mean, that's pretty cool that they're... You're helping manage their asset and...
And that's a lower-margin business for us than commercial parking, than this non-commercial parking that we turn into commercial parking, but as for...
Which shows you're more, just as much of a data company and a logistics company, if you will, you know?
Right.
So, that's what Park Mobile does, though, right? Like...
Right. So, Park Mobile also provides a, you know, payment gateway for people to reserve parking and then pass that through. I would say that slight... Two slight differences are that we are really just suburban-focused, and so, you know, Park Mobile's big clients are like Baltimore, Maryland. That's where they want to make their money. They're a very low-margin company in general. I think they charge just four and a half percent on average. We also view ourselves... So, first, we focus on the suburbs, and second, we view ourselves as more of a customer
We also view ourselves, so first, we focus on the suburbs, and second, we view ourselves as more of a customer service layer. So we want, if somebody has a problem with their parking, or they don't understand how to use our app, or they have any questions whatsoever, they have any issues, we want them to call us and not the parking department. And so we want them, we want to start taking work away from people who are getting, you know, maybe it's the police lieutenant who's getting ten calls a day from somebody who got a ticket and they're having a problem. We really, you know, when we onboard new spots, we don't just, you know, put up signs. We show up in the morning with coffee and doughnuts, and we hand them out, and we spend twenty minutes walking people through, who may not be like the most tech-savvy, on how to sign up for our app, and how to reserve their parking, and what to do if they have a problem. So I'd say that's the, those are the two differences that kind of separate Boxcar from Park Mobile.
Got it.
So those forty spots at Talmadge Hill, are they actually, is there a stake in the ground that says this is?
Boxcar parking, absolutely. So when you pull into those Talmadge Hill, the Talmadge Hill train station, you'll see there's Boxcar parking, signs in every other spot on Tier Four. Boxcar logo has been stenciled on every, you know, we stenciled it on every spot there. And, you know, now that we're selling out, we're probably gonna be expanding to the Tier Five.
Okay.
So we have a lot of Darien customers, or Darien residents, as you can imagine, in the northern part of your town as current customers.
So you had mentioned before, like, if towns didn't want you to be using residential spots or residential driveways, I, I, just back me, back what was-
Right, so as Airbnb for parking, we could rent out people's driveways, right? If you had a driveway near the train station, somebody could rent it out. Now, there's, that is not really in the town's best interest generally, because a lot of those people have street parking permits, where otherwise, you know, people can't park there. And so the last thing we want to do is have somebody rent out their driveway, and then they decide to start parking on the street and clutter up the street. And so that's something that a number of towns have asked us to avoid doing, is renting out people's driveways. And because we are in this kind of like partnership with towns, we just listen to them. We don't say, "Hey, you know, forget you, we're gonna go rent out people's driveways." Like, we only want to work on the properties that you think it's a good idea to work on. And if you don't think it's a good idea to work on any properties, then this isn't a great fit.
And that's one where those zoning regs would probably get in the way a little, yeah.
Would be, not be permitted use.
Correct.
Right.
So, okay, we'll keep you going.
Okay, so Darien, priority for Darien residents, that's an extended booking window, which can help shorten waitlists, and just reduce CO2 commute emissions and support the local community. Another thing that we do find is that, you know, there's a lot of people who have a parking permit, and they've had it for years, and then they retire, and they, or for some reason, they don't need it anymore, and they just hold on to it. So as we have, you know, we've been in Chatham and Madison for two years, we're starting to see people matriculate off the waitlists and on the boxcar because they know that we're gonna be around for a while. It doesn't happen immediately, but this is another way to help kind of-
This, you add certainty to the ability to park. This way, you just don't have to sit on a parking permit for those twenty-five days you're going to the city.
Exactly, you know, I'll go in, I watch a play sometimes, so I'm gonna hold on to my six-hundred-dollar-a-year parking permit. It's not that expensive. How, how expensive are they here?
I forget, it's even less, right? Four, four-fifty, yeah, something like that.
It's like a dollar twenty-five a day, basically, so.
It's too low, but, and I commute.
The town has been trying to call the waitlist, but there's still a lot of people on list. We're looking for a spot either in, sometimes either, sometimes one or the other.
I think they now charge you ten bucks a year to be on the list, right?
There is, that's recently, from the past year or two, a charge, because what they found was people would just, for free, you just keep your name on list. So once they charged even a very small amount, a lot of people dropped off, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. That mandatory survey, just stay on the list, something like that.
Right, and they're trying to reach out to people, "Are you sure you need?"
Yeah.
So what's int, we talked about, I'll let you keep going.
Just a quick app walkthrough. So if you download our app, you can see in a number of locations where you can reserve, and then you can choose, basically zoom in on a town. This is Chatham again. You can see that this is kind of market-based, so the ones right next to the station are ten dollars. You know, it's a funeral home, nine dollars. Someone over here, multifamily, is eight dollars. And then, you know, so our, our parking is on average six dollars and fifty cents a day, and this is in towns where parking is usually five dollars. So we are slightly more expensive. What people are generally buying with that premium is a guaranteed spot, no matter what time they show up in the morning. So if it's two extra hours with their family asleep, this allows them to say that, "If I show up at ten AM, I still have a spot waiting for me."
They're not stressed out, yeah.
Exactly, so that's the, generally, there's a slight premium over municipal parking prices.
Is the bus and the workspace coming soon?
So buses, we have, so we really do just focus on the suburbs and making commutes better. And so we run buses from four towns in New Jersey, Chatham, Madison, Westfield, and Cranford. This happened during the summer of hell, which is what cut off the Morris Essex Line from Penn Station. We kind of sprung into action and partnered with charter bus companies to run direct service into Manhattan for these towns, six towns. At the end of the summer, we cut it down to just two, Manhattan, Madison, and Chatham. But this has been a, like, a very successful product for us. So we don't own buses, we don't employ drivers, but we partner with charter bus companies that have very nice, you know, luxury charter buses with Wi-Fi power outlets, bathrooms, and, you know, professional chauffeurs. And every morning, we run three buses from Madison and Chatham, New Jersey, and two from Westfield and Cranford. People can reserve a spot in the app, it's reserved seating, and we have drop-offs throughout Manhattan.
And how much is the service?
So it's fourteen ninety-nine, or you can buy a ten-pack for twelve dollars and forty-nine cents a ticket.
Back to Darien parking now.
That's another commute. And wait, sorry, hold on, I'm still interested. So the workspace, so Workspaces in Darien, because we have a bunch that are gonna be opening, so this would also could go onto this app so someone could book work with us.
Exactly, so a lot of people work from home two days a week. Our existing customers work from home frequently, so we partner with Workspaces, whether it's a lawyer's office with one desk, or a, you know, professional coworking space. And there, a lot of the smaller ones don't have the software to manage their, you know, drop-in dailies. And so we, in the same way that we partner with parking owners, we'll partner with these workspace owners, and people reserve a desk for, you know, thirty-five dollars a day, and we split the revenue with the owner. They get the majority of it.
That would be fine as well, right, and all the-
Yeah, that's not so much a zoning issue there, because all you're doing is-
The landlord or whoever.
Matching people up with available space. The parking's a little different in that, we talked about the issues with parking in residential zones, and when you start putting rail station parking within existing use, it can get a little tricky, and so it has to be thought out with the commission.
You'd never want to do it in a lot, like, that's stressed potentially, like, behind.
Right, you can imagine, or not limited, if you think of, say, the Starbucks parking lot. If you can imagine, go, it wouldn't work there. There's just not enough excess parking in that lot. And what we talked about also was the interesting fact that some lots in Darien might be, have a lot of vacancies certain times of the year, but at Christmas, oh, they're not gonna have, you know. So we talked about the flexibility that you guys have to turn on the spaces, and certain times of year saying, "Nope, we're not, you book Christmas week."
Precisely.
That person's not gonna have the supply that they normally would have.
Exactly, so flexibility is the name of our game, is, you know, we partner with funeral homes where on days that they have funerals or viewings, we lease out zero spots, and on days that they don't, we lease out thirty-five spots. So it is that flexible. They tell us forty-eight hours in advance when they have a funeral, and that spot's not available, and it has a forty-eight-hour booking window in general, that location. So we really think that, you know, that, nobody wants to be the last town to build a parking deck, and in ten years, are we gonna need these as much? Probably not, right? Ride-sharing, and who knows what autonomous vehicles are coming around. But, you know, so if we can just make better use of the resources that we have right now, then we can be that, you know, the bridge to the future where we don't need it as much, so. You know, we should, if we could find, if we get ten percent of the spots here, of eleven, of eleven hundred spots, if we get a hundred and ten spots, that would be six-hundred-and-eighty people who could use that throughout the year to some degree, and we would be able to, you know, at least cut into part of the, the pain that people are feeling who can't park here.
Have you hooked them up with the guys at Darien Self-Storage yet?
Not yet, well, I did, we did talk about various properties. We explained that Darien Self-Storage has sixteen parking spaces, and if they wanted to reach out to manage their spaces, that's okay. They don't need our permission to do that, because they already have been approved for that. But we did talk preliminarily, and you, I'm sure, as Joe is discussing this, you're all thinking in your minds of certain properties that might, this might work. Properties near a train station that might have excess parking during certain days and times. So without going into details, I think one of the things we wanted to bring to the commission was this whole app. It has worked in New Canaan, you guys have said it's been successful.
Yes.
The town has been very receptive. As I said, First Selectman Jamie Stevenson is receptive to the idea. The question is, these gentlemen are saying, if Darien wants to work with us, the next steps would be-
How do we implement this?
How do we implement, say, John and I have talked about a six-month trial, maybe from-
So how do you done with other towns, like, implemented it?
So it's really, you know, town's choice, but I, we've, what New Canaan set the precedent for was this six-month trial idea.
Okay.
Where, listen, this is maybe not black and white zoning-wise, but let's try it out for six months, and then please come before the board again, and let us know how it went.
And have they changed their rank yet, or it's still too early?
No. And it's funny, because, you know, some towns have passed ordinances. They said, you know, "We're just going to create an ordinance for Boxcar to do this." And other towns, most towns have said, "We actually like this being a gray area because this is the, you know, carrot and the stick, right? If you start doing things that we don't like, well, it's not like we gave you carte blanche to operate in our town."
Yeah.
You know, this is, we, we maintain the ability to say, "You're, you're breaking zoning by working with this property."
So my idea, speaking with Jeremy and Fred, was to implement a six-month trial and let staff decide, be the arbiter of the trial lots, and you guys have already come up with two, as I understand it?
We've spoken about a couple, a couple ideas. It's, it's interesting, because one, one thing that we've talked about is spaces which are currently vacant are perfect. You know, you work with the real estate broker, and the broker says, "Well, I'm showing it Tuesday. Make sure there's no one in the lot."
Right, like Al Miran has a, the bank, the, the bank lot, right?
Yeah.
Bank of America on Sedgwick, is what it's called.
It's not, right, thank you very much.
And, and what we talked about is, hey, no one's there most of the time, the lot, I get it. If it snows, we could find out, we can get supplied, but that type of thing where, for the time being, it's vacant.
Sure.
And until they get a new tenant in, it just, I think it was twenty parking spaces or something like that we looked at.
Exactly.
Where it's close enough to the train, it's not prime parking, but for people that are going in at the last minute or just want the certainty, eh, maybe they'll work around it.
You even mentioned Goodwives, maybe, or-
Parts of Goodwives, for example, the farmer's market is there from June to November. In, you've all been there, and the spots furthest away from the building could Boxcar take spaces from, say, November to June in the off-season, twenty, thirty spaces, and work with Goodwives management on finding the right number that works for the Goodwives businesses.
And you, you've already, of course, defined those eleven hundred spots too, so, and have done due diligence.
Right, there's a few that we talked about that-
Spencer, you wanna run through them real fast? You have to come up here.
You're gonna, yeah, that'd be, and again, we're, we're not gonna, this is for like a, I guess, to give us an idea. We're not gonna be sitting here and saying, "Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no." We'll let, if we go through this trial, we'll put it in these guys' hands to kind of manage number of spots and work with you guys.
Yeah, you guys mentioned-
Oh, I'm sorry, you gotta give your name, full name.
Oh, sure, I'm Spencer Herman from Boxcar. And you guys mentioned Goodwives. We actually met with them last week. We met with Wing Biddle.
Yep.
He's the CEO and President of Erstod Biddle. He said, "It sounds like a fantastic idea," and we'll let him know your guys' thoughts. And the other top leads we have are New Beginnings Community Church.
Oh, yeah.
They've given us the okay. They don't actually own the property, but I know they operate and they get these spaces from the landlord. So I'm gonna give them feedback as well on whatever happens tonight.
It's the old dinner theater building, it's a shared parking lot, and we talked a little bit about that.
So New Beginnings has it for like half of the day, and for the other half, whoever else. Then Nineteen Old Kings Highway South, they're owned by Fourstone Capital. And then, our other top lead would be also Fisherman's Net and Lanfear Day Spa. So if we did receive your blessing, we would absolutely go after them, see if we could get those as parking spots to help out the Darien residents.
How small have you started, I mean, in towns? Ten spots, or like, what's the-
I mean, we will start from-
I wanna make, I mean, I-
We're just an anchor. We don't like to go, we don't like to go to like five spots, because it's not, you know, we go out and it'll hand out flyers on the train station platform.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll do that at six AM, so it's just not worth it if we don't have at least ten spots.
Oh, and I'm not trying to limit you to ten, I'm just wondering if what you've just mentioned is enough to get you started and-
Yeah, we have towns anywhere from five spots on. But, you know, a town like Darien, this is a really prime commuter town.
Yeah.
So that is the reason we're in front of you tonight.
Sure, okay.
Is that, you know, as many as possible, wherever we could help you guys out as well to stop the phone from ringing on your end. It's a lot easier once you have a couple, like, one location, to go to other owners and say, "By the way, this person's doing it, and here's their action."
Yeah, check out the app, and you can show them the app and use, and-
So the first one's the hardest.
Yeah, okay. Everybody game, let them work with staff on a six-month trial period? So all the way through, I mean, I almost feel like through the end of next, through 2020, you let, you got, because it's gonna be some ramp-up time to get a real flavor, if that makes sense? And then, and then we, in the meantime, as things are ramped, then whoever's left here can work with staff and, and kind of figure out if there needs to be any regulation adjustments or amendments or that sort of thing.
We'll talk about regulation adjustments, but, of course, there'll be lots that work better than others, for whatever reason. It's landlord, it could be location, a variety-
Exactly.
Because in New Canaan, you really have one spot.
That's, that's been it, and we've been hesitant to add until we kind of sell that spot out, and we're close to that.
Yeah. But then New Beginnings is a great idea too.
So we'll, we'll-
And it's a little different there, right? Because St. Aloysius is right there, right?
Catagora from the station.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I don't know if we have that suite of a location, though, but-
Yeah, these, it's interesting, because when you think of the possible locations, and you think of the existing train station parking and the Coons Lot, which are, those are prime spots.
Yeah.
These spots are a little further off the beaten path.
They're gonna be cheaper than Coons.
And they're gonna be more likely cheaper, because they're further away.
Have you talked to the owner of the Coons Lot? I mean, that's another kind of interesting manager, maybe the sublets and-
Is that also a selectman?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have. So I think that's a great opportunity as well. Again, we can go really low-margin on that, and just say, we're more of a payment gateway.
Yeah.
But, you know, if it helps him-
The guy yells at you every morning?
Exactly, so if it's a cash thing, then we, I mean, would people, yes, so that, that would be more of a, if you're familiar with like Spot Hero and Park Wiz, they integrate mainly with like commercial parking lots. And so we'll reach back out to-
Mr. Coons, yeah.
Mr. Coons.
But it's nice, I mean, it brings business into Goodwives and-
Oh, yeah, that's cool, okay.
Does that lot fill up?
Goodwives?
Uh, no, no.
Oh, Coons, oh, Coons Lot?
I'll, I'll commute a little off of the regular hours, because I'm like the last spot.
I didn't realize that. It, that's more of a, they call it the shoppers' lot sometimes, because it's more transit in and out of the city versus commuters.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, is that a fair way to assess it?
Yeah, I go in a ten.
But anyway, you, like, you, keep, Mr. Coons is a gentleman, good luck.
Do you want me to run through the rest of this?
Uh, I think we're good, unless you have something you really want to advertise on TV seventy-nine right now, but-
Just buy Boxcar parking.
Where are you guys, where are you guys from?
Uh, New Jersey, so we're, started in, I mean, Cranford, Mountain Lakes.
You live in there now, or?
Yes.
Sorry about that, no, just-
Sorry. Do you host all your infrastructure? Um, we are really committed to making sure that New Jersey, you know, continues to have a strong connection to New York, so-
No, 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 he means-
No, your app.
The backend, like, oh, I, like, our, our New Jersey's infrastructure, I was like, I can't claim that.
Boxcar.
Um, yeah, we use Google Cloud, so, you know, everything from their doggers to Kubernetes, like, it's, it's really helpful for us. And we built the app from the ground up.
But you own the app, you made the app.
Yes, we, we made the app, absolutely.
Uh, this is really interesting, thanks, gentlemen, good luck. And just, you know, work with these two gentlemen.
Thanks.
Uh, it's, they have the, the power, if you will, on this trial.
Well, it's, it's also what landlords are receptive, and that's also one of the constraints here, is finding landlords that are receptive.
Yeah, just so it's clear, you know, get the landlord, and then just bounce it off of Jeremy and Fred, and get the approval, and hopefully we can make some adjustments longer term. Keep us posted on New Canaan, and, you know, through, through these guys, on anything that you discover for this whole period.
The only thing I would add, I guess, is that we're always on a listening tour. You know, there's a lot of problems in suburbs that are really hidden from view, maybe they're micro-problems. And so, you know, by found, you know, by maintaining strong bonds with like planning and zoning commissions and municipal, you know, leaders, we're able to kind of help out. So there was like a Whole Foods in Madison, New Jersey, where people were parking all over the neighborhood. Obviously, people don't like, you know what it's like, people don't like other people parking from their homes, so the mayor was getting a lot of calls, he's, you know, he sought our help. And we were able to find sixty parking spots for all of that Whole Foods employees. And we were able to, you know, have Whole Foods pay us. We pay the owners of these locations slightly less. It's a good financial arrangement for us, and, you know, from a planning and zoning perspective for new developments that are maybe looking at being underparked, we are concerned about that. We're happy to bird-dog parking spots, we're happy to kind of come up with new creative solutions. So if there's something that you think we might be interested in, we're always willing to give it a call in a meeting and see if there's something we can do to help.
Cool.
So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Good stuff, thanks, great presentation. All right, uh, so we're gonna go to deliberations for the, I guess, the first special permit application, number one seventy-three A, Nick Chat, Assalani, B forty-seven Boston Post Road. Anybody want to start, or?
I'll, I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'll, but I'm, have a, maybe I'm confused about something. What are we to do with the communications?
Of the letters?
Your moniker.
Uh, you know, I, I, I-
Not a zoning issue per se.
Exactly, and I wrote back to-
Lucille.
Lucille, I wanna say Johnny's wife, but, and I, I was a customer theirs for nineteen years that I've been here. And I explained, like, we can only look at zoning issues. And so I asked her to focus her, any concerns on zoning issues, so she wrote, what, the third email to us, correct?
Right.
Did you get that in there?
There was really no zoning issues in there. I mean, her concerns were business competition issues and unrelated to the special permit standards.
Have a good night.
And that's what John explained to her, he says, "Look, we have these standards, and that's the way the commission makes its decision." And I think she realized that yesterday or the day before, that I'm disappointed, but I understand that you have certain standards, and that my reasons are not the same as the reasons the commission may use.
And, and I think she was also confused about the submissions, that once they went to Jeremy, that they'd go to everybody, because she did address it to me, and kind of the back and forth, it was clear that she didn't understand it was a public document at this point. So, without getting into details of what's about the business and that sort of thing, I don't have any zoning concerns with the application, and that's.
I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be granted, frankly, I mean, those other issues that she raises, I'm very sympathetic toward them, but that's not our.
They're business competition issues, if you will.
Yes.
Is that a good way to?
Not, well, let's just say they're not zoning issues.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not zoning issues, that's the long issue.
And again, I deep, deep respect for that business, because Johnny's been here forever. You know, three generations, I think, we're working on now, so, I just hope everybody understands that our focus can only be so, so broad, and only focused on zoning issues, so. No issues, no issues, no issues, so I think it's pretty clear that.
We'll draft something for the next meeting.
Thanks.
Same thing, flood damage prevention application, do you want me to read it, or just?
No, just the, which, just the title anyway, sorry.
Local properties sale C six seventy-nine, six eighty-five, Boston Post Road.
So that, again, that, I mean, I, I mean, it's so straightforward.
Can I just ask a question, Jeremy? The flood zone, what do you wanna call it?
Flood plain, yeah.
Flood plain issues, I mean, all those rules, in terms of what you can do and what you can't do, is draining the yard and running it down a pipe into the flood zone, is that a?
Well, it's interesting, because in this case, the whole property's in the flood zone. So they have this area near the, I'll call it the front right corner of the building, which is collecting water. And so what they're doing is taking that water and basically putting it in the rear of the property.
Better spot, is it?
A better spot, more out of the way. What's interesting here is, during a flood, when the Goodwives River floods, now, I've never seen it onto this property, but I would presume that there's nothing they could do at that point. So, this is for, I'll call it a day like today or tomorrow, where it might rain, or there might be a lot of standing water, it's just to dry out that little piece. So, yes, that's why Harry was here to say, yes, it technically meets all the flood regulations, because they're not trying to either filter way out of the flood zone, and it won't change the fact that the property still floods, and it's.
And it's not pushing it really, I mean, it's not a huge volume of water where.
It's very low amount, and then the AC unit and the generator will be on platform.
Which is a good thing, right?
It's a good thing.
Good question, though. All right.
Great, we'll draft something for the next meeting.
What else you have?
Minutes, January twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, and February five, twenty nineteen. I got nothing on either.
Who do I?
I was gonna look at it, but I looked at it already, and it didn't have anything. Uh, so, can I get a motion to approve January twenty-ninth minutes?
Motion to approve January twenty-ninth minutes.
That's submitted, can I get a second?
Second.
Make sure you're here, all in favor? All right, and then, February fifth, can I get a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second. I saw Mr. Rand raises.
No, I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Cunningham, I have it.
Sure, oh, well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, and what do we have, just a quick calendar update? Um, I got one little item, we, today, as chair, I get to sit on the Affordable Housing, uh, what is it called?
Trust Fund.
Trust Fund. Committee, is it?
Yeah.
So, the money that was, I mean, this goes way back to the Mead House, Mr. Genovese's.
Seven forty-five post, it's something five years.
Yeah, so, instead of providing collusionary zoning units, Mr. Genovese was required by the commission to make a deposit in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think it was somewhere.
Three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars.
There you go. Um, and so, what, two years ago, two and a half years ago?
Correct.
The Trust Fund Committee approved the use of those funds by a certain date in, I believe, twenty eighteen.
For Old Town Hall Homes?
Yeah, for Old Town Hall Homes, well, that date expired, and so, the committee of three of us, uh, 'cause two weren't present, we had a quorum out of five, met this morning, and just extended the date to January first, twenty twenty, to use those funds for the Old Town Hall Homes, so.
And will they be, it sounds like they'll be able to do it in that timeframe?
Uh, yeah, it, it's deadline not to finish it, it's to commence with construction. And I, I don't know all the real estate terms, but to sign the documents in which the funds are released and are paid to the construction.
Construction loan, okay, cool.
The demolition there is gonna start.
It started yesterday, Joe Warren was at the meeting, mentioned, so.
So it will continue on for a couple weeks, and then they'll get the foundation permit to put in the foundation for that new building.
And it sounds like, related but unrelated to that meeting directly, but to the project, that they're gonna move the paramedic temporarily, or we don't know yet that.
Well, we're still working out the details of, because it's gonna be a construction site, it would be awkward for the paramedics to have, to be there with their vehicles, and the town is working with the housing authority on coming up with potential solutions that may be better. But especially during certain aspects of the construction and demolition, it may be more convenient for the paramedics to be somewhere else.
Offsite.
The town is working with Joe Warren on some potential ideas and solutions.
That's great.
All right, so that's my little update, we have OPC on Thursday, but I don't, I don't really have anything to report, because it's been pretty mellow here.
Right, the big, the big one we've been working on, spending a lot of time with, is Parklands, the assisted living facility, the residence at Selix Woods, they received a temporary CEO, I think, yesterday or late last week, which will allow thirty-five staff members to start moving in, doing some training, can't move patients in, or residents, till they finish everything. There's a number of things they're wrapping up over there. A lot of fire marshal issues, building issues, et cetera.
Some lights issues that we were asked, or Jeremy, I shouldn't say we, staff was asked to look at, and had to do with the shades weren't up yet, so it was like blaring down the hill. And so they're working through a couple fine-tuning, some.
Issue, a couple issues, one thing we might have to bring back to the commission, but they hope to move residents in sometime in March.
Is there any chance that we could get a tour?
Yeah.
Absolutely, you let us know, and there's guys there, I can certainly, you call me, give me a day and time.
Yeah, we'll try, let's, I guess we gotta watch a meeting, but we can even call a meeting for it.
Yeah, give me a day and time you're around, I'll, we'll go out there. Uh, the plant, you know, we, as they talked with the commission, some of the perennial plantings aren't in, but it's coming along, and there's a lot of guys still out there every day working on the parking lot, the parking garage, the interior aspects, et cetera.
Uh, okay, and then, maybe you give us a little bit of an update on the Hunt Club.
The Oxbridge Riding and Racket Club, Dave Keating has been monitoring the construction to make sure there's not mud in the road, he did go out this morning and saw some mud in the road, told the contractor and Mr. Colligan of the club, I'm gonna go out again late in the day, can you clean it up? So I saw Dave at seven o'clock, and said, how did your late afternoon visit go? Not well. So, we're gonna reach out to Mr. Colligan tomorrow morning. If need be, we'll have them come to the commission's next meeting on March twelfth.
I was really trying to avoid that.
I was too, and we were both very disappointed.
Again, realizing that it's the wettest winter ever, but still, it was a mess over there.
Yeah, Dave was very disappointed, it's one thing in the morning, but when you go back in the afternoon and.
Nah, Jeremy, all weekend, you know, again, this is not my job to monitor this stuff, but it was, it was bad. After rain, by the way.
Uh, the other quick one is behind Cafe Nero, CST fifty, which the commission approved. They're working, if you've seen the theater building, they're working on the side of the building there. Darien Green, the office building next to Duchess.
They're there every day, over the weekend too, I mean, they're just, I had no idea it was that much work, not in a bad way, it's just.
It's looking great, the facade is changed, they're gonna do all new landscaping, it's gonna look great.
And then, Old Jack's Fabrics is, looks great.
John Carros was, he's going before the ARP tonight, that building's gonna look great when it's done. They're moving along very quickly there.
Yeah.
So, a lot of commercial projects going on.
My side of town's shaping up. All right, uh, oh, and then what, just calendar?
Uh, next week is March fifth, uh, there's nothing on the agenda, a couple of you couldn't make it, so we're gonna cancel next week, the meeting after is March twelfth, it's not a full night. Uh, the week after that is March nineteenth, which will be a special meeting, Glenn will be here, it's gonna be a full night of zoning regulation and map amendments. So it'll be a full public hearing night, it won't be in this room. So, we're off on the fifth, on, for a light agenda on the twelfth, very full agenda on the nineteenth.
So you couldn't get any of the map changes next, the fifth, I should know?
No, in fact, the specific, the small six properties, we did last week send a letter out to those six property owners to say, you know, we're rezoning your property. Let us know how you feel about that, because the commission definitely is gonna wanna know if you're in favor or not in favor, so.
Any feedback yet, or not?
Uh, we've heard from one property owner who's not in favor.
Oh, great, okay, well, that's helpful.
So that is, and I, and, that's perfect, they told us, because we can accommodate.
And what was the reasoning just out of here?
Did you get in touch with them?
Yes, I did, this was, I believe, in back of Chevrolet on Old Kings Highway South.
Oh, okay.
It was the one the commission was on the fence about?
Yeah, the commission was on the fence about it anyway, but, um, you know, as, as you noted in, you know, your prior discussions, that is the only property on that side of the street that would be, that would turn residential, so it's.
Okay, I get it.
We get it, yeah.
He's gonna provide a letter, he's gonna provide some reasoning.
Okay, good, interesting.
We'll, of course, distribute that to the commission at the.
But that's what we need, that's exactly what we need.
That's what I said, great, great. So that's all we have to report.
All right, so the fifth is.
Fifth is gonna be canceled.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had the, the twelfth, twelfth.
Twelfth is a couple of public hearings, nothing too crazy, and then the nineteenth is a full public hearing night on zoning regulations and map amendments.
All right.
For the twelfth, so I'm meeting tomorrow, as part of this board, I'm also like you on the light board.
Yep.
We're meeting tomorrow, there's quite a bit of activity around that, so can I have ten minutes on the twelfth, just to do.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
It'll be super quick.
No, it sounds like we have ample time, don't take too much of it.
Yeah, and I think the twelfth is also possibly an executive session with town council.
Okay, perfect.
So it'll be good night.
Anything else, sir?
What about, what are we, this?
Oh, that, I think.
Eighty-six near Waldo.
I think that's for the next meeting, we gave it to, on the one line. So hang on to that.
Yep.
Okay.
That's for the March twelfth.
This is gonna be an interesting one.
I don't know if I got that.
It was the other day.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, TV seventy-nine.